Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Next, we have citizen comments. Is there anyone wishing to speak under citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close citizen comments, and we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are three different items on here. Would you like to break it out, or would you just assume to all at once if you have any questions?
I'm fine with voting as a block.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I vote that we accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion on the floor by Mrs. Tucker. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, under new business, I would assume Ms. Warner, you're going to come up here and give us an update on the employee supplemental health benefits.
Do you mind if I remove my mask?
Oh, it's your discretion.
Thank you. Employee supplemental health benefits include voluntary employee-paid benefits, so there's no county funding related with it. It's all employee money. And it covers things like the flexible spending account, short and long-term disability, cancer, and critical illness insurance, hospital indemnification, accident life insurance. These benefits are currently provided through American Fidelity and AFLAC. American Fidelity has served as the county's flexible spending account and cafeteria plan administrator since 1988. Over the last five years, I've been here right about five and a half years, there have been multiple complaints to me about American Fidelity's handling of the flexible spending account and the cafeteria plan. Their employees' flexible spending account debit cards have been denied when presented at doctors' offices, which is very embarrassing. And I can tell you that I know that firsthand because it happened to me recently. And employees' medical information has been sitariously to former spouses multiple times. I have gotten complaints across the organization from frontline employees to department heads to constitutional officers about this. Each time, I have called the regional director, Eric Bauer, and heard a lot of excuse-making but no real solutions. The problem just keeps continuing. It's sporadic, so that's why I haven't come to you before, because we would have an incident, then things would settle down for a while, then it would, you know, happen again. And although American Fidelity provides the flexible spending account and cafeteria plan administration to the employees free of charge, they do so in exchange for guaranteed access to all full-time county employees and the ability to sell their products, supplemental health products, to the employees. They insist, they claim it's an IRS requirement. I have verified that it is not. That they have to meet in person with every employee every year. Of course, those meetings have become virtual during COVID, but the employee has to have a face-to-face meeting with them and sign off on a form. This is resented by our employees. You know, if an employee does not have a flexible spending account or any supplemental health plan, they don't understand why they have to meet with these people. And so it's, I spend most of the month of May each year chasing employees down to get them to fulfill this requirement. And it causes a lot of stress both on the employees and on the HR department when we have to do that. Our current benefits consultant, Pierce Group Benefits, are here to make a presentation about how they can save employees money by offering supplemental health benefits at a lower cost. I have checked, and if employees don't spend all their flexible spending account money by the end of the year, it can be transferred over to the Pierce Group provider. I also check to see if an employee really wants to keep their American Fidelity plans or their AFLAC plans. They can be grandfathered. They just won't be able to add any new plans, but they can keep what they have. So I'd like to introduce Sarah Struckman and Dee Byers from Pierce Group, and they're going to do a brief presentation, if that's okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you so much. Can I hand these out?
Certainly.
Good afternoon. As Linda mentioned, my name is Sarah Struckman. I'm here with Dee Byers. We are with Pierce Group Benefits. I first want to thank you for your partnership. We have been assisting Linda for several months now with your health insurance benefits. I also want to thank you for everything that you do serving public sector. I actually have a background in public sector. I worked for Social Services for a time. And I also have a background in client relations and was trained by the Walt Disney World Company. Dee will introduce herself in a few moments, but I'd like to start out by first explaining the cost savings that Mrs. Warner explained by having all of your employee benefits in one place. Pierce Group Benefits is a regional provider between the three different states. We are in Virginia. We've been in Virginia for almost five years. We have been in North Carolina for over 50 years. And recently, last year, we were asked to come into South Carolina. We service 250,000 employees. We have extremely high standards for not only our team members, the individuals we have working within our company, but we also have best-in-class products, and I'll go into that more in a moment. Not only would bundling all of your employee benefits save you time and money, everything would be in one place, and it would be an advantage to your employees. We have the capability to put all of the benefits on a personalized website. We do that right now for your health, dental, and vision. We also have one-on-one benefit counseling sessions. This is different than you're receiving with American Fidelity today. This is a time where our benefit counselors, who are trained, come on site, and employees meet with them to discuss their benefits. We take a holistic approach at the individual. Are they aging out into retirement? Are they family planning? Are they straight out of college? We're taking an educational approach to empower your employees to best navigate their employee benefits. In turn, that provides cost savings. We also do onsite payroll uploads. Mrs. Warner can verify that. We've done a little bit of that recently with some software that we have with a streamlined billing process and service. As I mentioned, we take a very serious approach to the things that we put our name behind. And that is no different with voluntary benefits. Just like your health insurance, we work with over 40 different carriers, and we go out and we shop the market for the best available carrier to service your network. We do the exact same thing with your supplemental benefits, so that they fit hand in glove with your health benefits. We have shown that it assists with employee attraction and retention. We use one claim form. We have a service center that is staffed by local agents, just like Dee and I, where your employees can call, and they don't get a phone tree. Somebody actually answers the phone, and they can walk them through steps to save Mrs. Warner time. Dee is going to talk a little bit more about what differentiates our flexible spending program.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay with the mask or without? Okay. I'll take it off. I never know what's going on these days, so I try to play it safe both ways. Thank you, Sarah. Again, my name is Dee Byers. I do work with Pierce Group Benefits. I am a benefits consultant, and I will be the one that will be working with Amherst County Government. Just like Sarah said, we at Pierce Group, we want to make sure that we provide the best-in-class when it comes to benefits. We do understand that Ms. Warner and her staff has been having some challenges with your current FSA provider, and we want to have a solution for you for that. So with Pierce Group Benefits, what we can do is, I'll see if I can. So with Pierce Group Benefits, you have a placemat in front of you, and on that, we're talking about the FSA. A lot of you guys are familiar with the FSA, correct? Or does that need an explanation for flexible spending account? Okay. So I'll use the term versus FSA because it can turn into an alphabet soup, and I don't want that to happen. So with the FSA, there is a situation where you can actually have your benefits with your health insurance, with your medical, your dental, and your vision. Now, you have your voluntary benefits, and as Sarah was saying, you want them all to fit hand in glove, right? You want them all to work together. You don't want them to compete with each other. One of the great things with Pierce Group Benefits with our benefit counselors is that you'll have your employees will have a time that they can actually sit down during open enrollment and look at all the benefits that they have. So they can look at their medical, their dental, their vision. If they got voluntary benefits, like, you know, a cancer policy or a hospital policy or an accident policy, we don't want people to be overinsured, right? So just because it looks good doesn't mean it's great for everybody. And we definitely don't want employees to sign up for everything and then end up with like a $12 check, right? Because they have so many deductions coming out of the check. So what our benefit counselors have been trained to do is to go over those benefits with employees to make sure that they don't have double coverage where it's not going to pay out. One of the things we talked about was about the flexible spending account, and that's what this slide is here. Part of the flexible spending account and how we present it is that it definitely saves the employee money for known medical expenses. So of course, you put the money away pre-tax when you have to use it. You can use it on medical expenses pre-tax, and you don't have to pay the taxes on that money put back. The way it helps Amherst County Government is that it saves on your FICA savings. And as you can see there, you have like 32% of this particular case study that we have actually took advantage of the flexible savings, the FSA. And the way we are able to achieve those numbers is, like Sarah said, through education. So you'll hear people doing open enrollment. Everybody gets overwhelmed with so much information that they're not really understanding the benefits of what they have available and what you guys are providing to them. So we have counselors sit down and explain, is it beneficial for you to have an FSA? If you already have, you know, known medical expenses, like, you know, you're going to have dental work, or you know you need glasses, or your kids need braces, you can put that money back pre-tax and spend it out pre-tax, and you don't have to worry about, spend it out tax-free and not worry about paying on the taxes. The way it helps the individual or you as Amherst County Government is that you don't have to pay that employment tax because that money is coming out pre-tax, so you don't have that FICA savings. So if you see that with this particular count, the average participant put back $1,500. We had about 530 full-time employees, and about 170 actually participated in the FSA, which we increased that participation from about 10 to 15% to about 32% actually participating. And that's all based on education. And you can actually see that real savings at the bottom. So you see, to the actual division of the college, they saved about $19,000 in FICA savings. But the employees saved $73,000 in income tax savings. And that's real money. So the pre-tax dollars that they took out was a total of $255,000. So with that money, that means that those individuals did not have to pay income tax on that FSA or that first dollar amount for those medical expenses that they were going to use that money for anyway. So that's why we feel like having an FSA that's easy to use, that employees understand how to use it, and making sure it works for them is beneficial. We do have a couple of carriers that we work with with the FSA. We understand that some of the challenges that employees are using their debit card but then having to submit receipt, which that's very discouraging and complicated for employees to do. With the carriers that we use, they have about a 96% or 97% pass-through percentage. What that means is that when you use your debit card, 97% of those claims just go straight through. The employee gets reimbursed. It's paid, no questions asked. About 4% of those may require a receipt or follow-up, maybe through an email or a phone call, just to verify that that's a known expense. And I think that's one of the pain points with your current carrier that we can actually help resolve and use choosing us for an FSA. And again, we have the holistic approach. Again, you'll get a debit card. They can actually go online and track their expenses so they can see it real time. We also have where they can call into our call center, as Sarah said, and they can actually talk to somebody, and they have access to look up their account, so they don't have to go through the phone tree and try to figure out how it works. We do have aggregate loss protection. So what that means is that when you have an FSA, it's a use it or lose it, right? So if you don't use the money by the end of the year, you lose it. However, if an employee elects to put 500 on day one, they decide they no longer want to work for Amherst on day two, and that money is already gone, you don't get to recoup that loss, right? With the FSA providers we use, they actually cover that loss for you. So Amherst would not be out of any money if an employee decides to leave before they can have that funded back into the account. We do have a mobile app and a website, and then we have member messaging where they can get it through text messages as well. So we make sure that, we make sure that employees educate it, but they also have access to their account anywhere they need possible. Again, additional services we provide, like pet insurance, I think some people asked about that, legal identity theft, home and auto. I'm not a fur baby mama, but I know a lot of people are, and they really enjoy their pets, so that's another service that we offer. But again, as Sarah said, we like to take a holistic approach to benefits. So again, I will stop there to see if anyone has any questions about the FSA and what we can provide.
Board, do you have any questions at this time?
I have no questions. I guess, Ms. Warner, since you brought this to us, and, you know, you are the expert in the county as far as benefits, you know, do you have anything to add or to?
You know, I'd just like to say, it's never an easy decision to switch a contractor that we've had as many years as we've had here. It's always been my bias that you should be looking at things approximately every five years, that you should not let a vendor just stay in place and stay in place with no questioning. But my frustration has been that I have reported these problems over and over again, and I'm not getting anything but excuses. They understand that they may have lost our business because of this. I've, you know, I made them aware that I was going to come to you because I was concerned about the fact that they're not addressing the issues.
The other thing is, are all the employees aware of this potential change?
No. You know, once again, as we saw with health insurance, it's a business decision. And you don't normally talk to employees before you make a business decision. And, but I did check to make sure that if they, you know, feel really attached to their plan, we can grandfather them, and they can keep their plan.
Any more questions? I know that we have a motion before to make a decision today. It isn't imperative, is it imperative we make a decision today?
We don't have to make it today. We do need to make it soon because we have to get ready for open enrollment. We typically do that in February because we send information out to employees in April for the May open enrollment. So, you know, certainly it could be put off till the next meeting or even the first meeting in March.
Mr. Chairman, is there a reason to wait? I mean, I think that's a very compelling argument to make.
No, not necessarily. I didn't know. I know sometimes various board members, including myself, sometimes don't like to make a decision, a snap decision. But this is fairly straightforward. I mean, I'll, that's all I have. I mean, it doesn't affect me. I'm relying on you and your judgment to make a good decision for the employees of the county. That's why we have you as our HR director, so.
So are there any downsides?
As far as I know, not. I've tried to think of things like, can the money carry over? Can the employee keep their plan if they're really attached? Those were the only two I could think of that might, you know, upset an employee. So I've tried to address those possibilities.
So if they have money in a flexible spending account through the current provider, what happens to that if they?
That can be requested to be transferred over to the new vendor, and American Fidelity is legally required to transfer that money. And it would happen at the beginning of the plan year, so it would only be whatever carryover. We allow up to $500 carryover per year. So anything that was going to carry over, we would request that money to go to the new vendor because the new vendor would not start until the plan year starts on July 1st.
But typically, I mean, employees are trying their best to spend that account down by the end of June anyway.
Well, I would think that if we have employees going to get healthcare and their flexible spending card is being denied, that's a pretty big issue.
I can tell you, it was very humiliating for me.
I can imagine. So, Mr. Pugh, I mean, we can wait if you like, but I'm with Ms. Tucker. I'm not sure why we would need to.
I'm fine with that. If you want to make a motion, or one of you?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board direct staff to move forward with contracting employee supplemental health benefits through the Pierce Group Benefits for the fiscal year 2023.
There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. Are there any further discussions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Dean's asked me to stay here because the next item may impact me as well.
All right. Well, good luck.
Thank you both for your presentation.
Thank you, ladies, for coming.
Yep. All right.
She's here to answer questions if you have any.
Okay. Next, we have the county administrators' report. The first is FY 2022 Amherst County Wage Structure. Ms. Warner?
Yes. We have approximately 40 employees who are at 80% or more of the maximums in our current salary ranges. What happens when they reach the maximum is that is the most that we can pay into VRS on their behalf. And so they're locked in, their retirement is locked in at that amount other than the colist that we move the range each year. A lot of this has come about because we have improved wages for our employees over the last five years. We have, we have been hiring further into the hiring range. And we also have employees who stay with us a long time. It's not unusual to have an employee to have 30-plus years and still be working. We have a number of employees that are in that situation. What I am suggesting to fix it is to take the maximum of the range and increase it 20% all the way down. That will keep the spacing between the ranges. And it really doesn't impact pay in the sense, other than not bumping against the maximum, because the employees aren't going to get any more money. Money, salary offers are based on budget, so it just keeps us from bumping that VRS limit on the far side.
All right. Well, that's good that people come and they like to stay. They get these jobs, and they have a career here. And we retain that education and leadership and so forth. So it doesn't seem like there's a lot, this is something we need to do to help you and help the county wage structure. Are there any questions for Ms. Warner?
I did have one, and I was looking at the bands, the pay bands. What is the lowest-paid employee that we have? Because I was not sure.
Our lowest-paid employees are in social services. They do not fall under our wage structure. They fall under the State Board of Social Services wage structure. And we do have some employees down there that make in the high 20,000s.
So where you crossed out, where everything is crossed out, that means that those jobs are no longer available, or the?
No, I'm sorry.
Band has come up.
No, that is, that is a typo. The, under the minimums, those strikeouts should not be there. I just know.
Okay, now, now it makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion that the board accept the recommended increase in grade maximums for the FY 2022 Amherst County Wage Structure with the understanding that those minimums should not have been stricken.
I'm sorry, sir.
With the understanding that the minimum should not have been stricken.
Yes, thank you.
All right. There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the real estate tax assessment period.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. At the, at the end of the tax assessment, early on in '21, the chair of the Board of Equalization came and gave a report to the board. And his report is included in your agenda packet. And he made a whole variety of suggestions on how to improve our process. As you know, we only do real estate tax assessments every six years. And one of his suggestions was that we shorten the interval to something less than six years. And the board directed staff to go look at that topic and research it. And so now I'm bringing it back to get some input, some guidance from what you all think about it. In the interim, besides collecting studies from other localities, I asked our Planning District Commission to study this question. I also approached other administrators from other counties around and asked, would they be interested in sharing an assessment staff, perhaps? I checked with the city of Lynchburg to see if their assessment staff might be coaxed into doing work for us or for all localities. And so we had quite a bit of discussion amongst the administrators. The Planning District Commission convened what they called the ad hoc committee. And they brought in staff experts from all the localities to look at this question. David Profit from our staff participated in that, played a very powerful role in that group. And you can see their report in your agenda. There's a lot of, lot of pros and cons on the different methods that they looked at, and they looked at a wide variety of methods. And so you have that for you. They didn't come up with any particular recommendation on whether you should go forward or not. And the consensus of the group and of most localities, and in fact, the law is written in a way, the state law, that directs localities to assess real estate every four years. Smaller localities can do it on a longer period, and we take advantage of that exception. But it's generally believed that the sweet spot is every four years. By sweet spot, I mean capturing those gains and those losses over time because the business cycle tends to be about four years between recessions. And the, and of course, the tax rate doesn't really matter because you can change the tax rate fairly quickly from year to year. And if real estate values go up or go down, you're required to equalize that rate every year anyway. So the real issue that drives this question is one of fairness. And that is that as between property owners that are all sharing the same tax rate, those whose property is valued more recently in time is closer to current value than those that may have been valued five years ago. And so there's a disparity, and it could be considered to be unfair as between the different taxpayers. And so the more frequent you can do the tax assessment, the more fair that assessment is across the board. Of course, the more expensive it is, too. So we currently pay about $300,000 to do a tax assessment every six years. Divide that out by six, that's about, we average $50,000 a year. If you were to move that up to four years, same $300,000, if we contracted it out, it would be about $75,000 a year. If we were to hire our own staff internally, we would need three to four people. They would work for the Commissioner of Revenue. But we would have to fund those positions, and you should assume about $50,000 for each position. So that would be, just for three people, $150,000 a year. So I share all that information with you and invite your comment and discussion on what you think we ought to do.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mr. Rogers, no, you just said something I didn't understand. That's a clarification.
Okay.
You said it's unfair to the property owners because someone who recently bought property would be, it would be different than from one that had been assessed, say, four years ago. How is that? I mean, they're all assessed at the same time.
Ah, a new property. So somebody built a house, right? Something new on the market, and it's a sales price on it, and they'll use that sales price as the?
Well, they carry that to the Commissioner of Revenue, and they change the tax records, okay? Now, you're going to be taxed.
They're not paying the previous assessment?
No, they're paying the fair market value, and that sale helped determine what fair market value is.
That was a disconnect for me. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And that also occurs if you did a renovation, and you went and got a building permit, and you added a new kitchen or a new bedroom or something, and then that closed out, and you get your certificate of occupancy, well, that goes to the Commissioner of Revenue. So I asked Mr. Profit to come up in case you had any other questions.
Well, I looked at this, you know, I know it was a suggestion by the committee that had done this, but we'd been operating on this schedule for, however long, since you've been here, even before then, ever since they've been assessing properties. You're not required, if you're under 50,000 people, you're not required to do it but once every six years. Is that correct?
We're required to do it every four years, but upon a resolution by the board, you can make it five. We're required to do it every four years, but upon a resolution by the board, you can make it five years or six years.
All right, this is, this is not something that I've had complaints on or people saying we need to do it more often. Actually, it may lead to more problems. Because every year, every four years, you'll have a Board of Equalization that gets to hear from the new assessments. And so you have people and they'll have the ability to come before you and say, well, my property's too valuable or it's not valuable enough. That's what they do under the Board of Equalization, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And so you, you'll have that every four years instead of every six, which is fine. A change will increase the county budget. I don't think anyone here on the board would think we need a internal, to add three different people to our county roles and add that to the cost. We can still contract out whoever we like. We have control over that. If they don't do a good job one year, we can look for a new contract the next year when it comes up. And like Dean said also, if you're in need of extra tax revenue, then you just raise the tax rate. Because I think what this ultimately will lead to, the more often you, you raise the tax, the real estate, excuse me, the more often that you assess the value, more than likely with some hits, you're going to see an increase in the values. So it will lead to higher, in my opinion, it's going to lead to higher tax rates for all the citizens of the county. The county will see the amount of money that the property's worth and will be more likely to spend it. Now, that's just my opinion. It may not be true. If you look through the studies, the studies are inconclusive. They all have advantages and disadvantages. I, I see no real advantage of changing the schedule. I know I heard something about fairness, maybe so. But I would say that the status quo served us well, and I would just assume to leave it as is.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I thought about this a lot. And I think that this does have the possibility of removing peaks and valleys. I think that if we're looking at it over a four-year snapshot versus a six, I think that it may be fairer. Not shaking the status quo was never a reason for me not to do something. So I would give this a lot of thought. I probably would lean more towards a study or getting some more information. But quite frankly, I would like to hear from the person who represents the most populated part of our county. Drew, hear your thoughts on this.
I'm actually kind of leaning towards agreeing with the, Mr. Chair on this one. So I know you want to see fairness and eliminate, as you said, oops, sorry, peaks and valleys. But I'm just not seeing the worth at this point, so.
You also have in the package a, a proposal from a financial consultant who could do a study to look back twenty years to see if we had done tax assessments every four years, how that might change, have changed our revenue stream. Because there's no way to look forward, of course. You know, you don't know whether the values are going to go up or down. But you can look back and see what would a four-year interval have done. And that would give you a sense for maybe how much you were talking about on average over twenty years.
I, quite frankly, I would be very interested in that. And that's the thirty-six hundred dollars, Ms. Rogers?
I, I think that what I just heard was it's a way for the county to extract more money out of the taxpayers.
That's not what I heard.
Yes, see how much more revenue we could, we would receive.
Well, keep in mind also, sir, the, I mean, you have to equalize.
I, I understand that. But it's, it's a wash. I mean, over time, it, it's a wash, whether it's four years or six years, in my opinion. It's a wash because it's still done.
Mr. Rogers, could you, you, you said that several times, we have to equalize. Can you just explain that?
Okay, the law requires that once the, the tax assessment is done, it's property, and maybe, and Mark, feel free to correct me. Once the tax assessment is done and you apply, and assume property values went up, okay? Because they tend to go up over time. And so if you're collecting taxes at the same rate, yet the value of the property is higher, that, that percentage is going to be a larger tax collection. So, I mean, let's say your tax rate is four percent and your property's worth a hundred dollars, you're going to pay four dollars. But if your property's now worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or a hundred and fifty dollars, I mean, now you're paying six, okay? But you haven't changed the tax rate. So the law requires you to reduce the tax rate. So that there, your, the citizens are not paying six, you reduce the tax rate, so they're still paying just four.
The law requires or the law gives you the option to reduce?
Gives you the option because you could still raise.
Well, well, what it require, and you can help me with the words, Mark. I believe you're required to equalize. And so what we do when we pass our budget each year and adopt a tax rate, we state whether we are equalizing or not. So you're right, we have the option to not equalize. But we're required to address equalization when, when it occurs. Have I got that right, Mark? No?
It's, it's a little more complicated than that, to be quite honest. And, and I think, yes, what your, what your thought process is, is, is correct to a certain extent. But again, there's no requirement that the tax rate be reduced. It's just, you need to notify people that the dollar val, the, the amount of revenue that you're getting is a heck of a lot more now because of the assessed value going up. And that in and of itself usually results in public outcry. Public comes to the board, public wants taxes, taxes reduced to try and equalize about. But you've also got the Board of Equalization, you've got, people have the authority or the ability to go before them to say, hey, you assess my property too high. I believe that this is an incorrect assessment and I want you to change that. So there's kind of like a two-track approach. It's a lot more complicated, and this is relatively just, I'm just trying to keep it as simple as we can. But it's not a function of it's going to force us to equalize taxes.
I stand corrected. Thank you. Thank you. That's how, that's how I was proceeding it.
So, Mr. Martin, you have anything?
Well, I would be in favor in moving to the four-year real estate assessment. You know, if Ms. Tucker wants to study, I think we can do that. I think what the study is going to show us is that over the past twenty years, the market values of the properties in the county has increased, which would have resulted in, I guess, more net revenue to the county, right? And we wouldn't have to be possibly, you know, I'm not sure what the budget's going to look like this year, if it's going to involve a, a proposed tax increase or not. I haven't seen that. I don't think any of us have. But I also do think that the, possibly a, a four-year assessment is fairer in, in both ways. Because if my property declines in value, right? Then there is a two-year period that I'm having to pay the higher value, right? So it goes both ways. I'm, I'm not sure we're in a position to go out here and hire three employees on a full-time basis to, to do it. So what, what did you say, Mr. Rogers, if, if we chose to do a...
It'd be additional twenty-five thousand dollars per year.
Because we're do, well, every six years, it's what?
It's about fifty thousand dollars a year. It's three hundred thousand dollars currently anyway.
Well, that's currently, yeah.
So it's going to, it's going to go up based upon inflation, so you're going to be paying, it's going to cost the county additional revenue. There's no doubt about it.
And our next assessment's not till when?
Well, six years from, so twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Correct.
That's when it needs to be in effect.
In effect.
Back up about two years from that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I understand. I'm not sure we need to make a decision today. We might want to think about it someday.
I agree with Mr. Martin, and, you know, when you look at it regardless, it's financially impacted citizens ultimately. Regardless of whether we stay on the six-year rotation or we do it four years. As been mentioned, you know, once our budgets are put together and we decide what bills we've got and what, what expenses we're going to do, we have to decide how we're going to set tax rates anyway. And so the citizens will pay that, that way or go pay the, you know, you know, we just finished, I'm maybe in agreement with Mr. Martin is maybe... Think about it a little later.
All right. Just so you know, at, at this point in time, I'm not planning on proposing a tax increase.
Well, hallelujah.
Woo wee. All right, well, I, I've heard, I agree with Mr. Ayers. I mean, I, I would rather just leave it to six years. But I'm willing to, let's put this off. We just had an assessment. It's nothing we have to make a decision on today. A, a further study, I think Mr. Martin hit the nail on the head as far as what he said. I, I'll go ahead and make the motion. We table this for, what do you all think? Table it for another year? And then have a discussion or table it for two years and then have that...
Mr. Rogers, is there, is there any benefit to one year versus two years or any downside?
At, at this, at this early on, no.
All right. Well, I'll make a motion if we can remember that. We're going to table this and have this discussion in approximately two years.
Would you rather have a year? I would have a year.
I'd rather have a year.
All right, well, I'll make the motion that we table this for a year and bring it back up next year at some point.
Yes, sir.
There's a motion on the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is, at our organizational meeting, we did not, of all our boards, committees, commissions and councils, we did not appoint a representative, an elected representative to the Planning District Commission. I raise that again to see if the board is ready to appoint someone to that.
Mr. Rogers, did you, did you tell me that Mr. Wade had, Mr. Wade had went to that meeting?
He did, he did attend.
Mr. Wade, did you attend to that meeting?
I did.
Is it something you would be willing to serve on?
I'll take it on.
Very good.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I move that Mr. Drew Wade be appointed to represent Amherst County at the PDC for county year 2022.
All right, motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next, after that...
Congratulations.
Yeah, they're hitting us up for some additional increase in dues, which will be about a thousand dollar additional.
Per year, yes, sir. So it's, it's, we're, we're, we're charged based on our population. And so they want to raise the, their fee, three pennies per head, which works up to about a thousand dollars for our county. And both Mr. Wade and I need the direction of the board on how you would like us to vote on that question.
Mr. Martin?
Mr. Chair, I, I, I think as outlined in the report to us, the county gets a great deal of support from the PDC. And I believe will continue to, so I, I don't have an issue with, you know, they haven't increased it in the past seven years. So I would be in favor of authorizing the county administrator and our elected representative, Mr. Wade, to vote in favor of the dues increase. And I'd make that a motion.
All right, any, any further discussion? There's a motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next we have the project status report.
I don't know.
All right. So next we have the projects, project status report.
That's for information. It, it has been updated on all the categories. If any board members have any particular questions? I can go through the whole thing if you want.
No, I'm good.
Are there any questions?
No, sir.
Everything continues to move forward.
All right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. All right, next we have Mr. Popovich, County Attorney, report.
Nothing at this, at this time, sir.
All right, that's good. All right, next Liaison and Committee reports. Does, we have the School Board on here. Ms. Tucker, do you have anything?
As a matter of fact, I did. So the School Board met last week. It was very, very well attended. But I got some information from the Chair that I would like to share with the board. The School Board decided to do a poll, and that poll was put on the School Board's site. And the question was, what do you want to do about the mask mandate? As we all know, the governor came out with Executive Order Two that said, that removed the mandate from the, from the previous governor. And so the School Board Chair decided to put a poll up and it asked the parents and the students and staff what they would like to see done. If you were not a parent, staff or student, you could not participate in the poll. I know because I tried, because I was wanting to see what it was about. So these are the results. Employees, they had sixty percent of school employees that voted, fifty-eight point five percent voted to keep it, twenty-eight point one percent said keep it optional, nineteen percent said keep it optional with a metric, and that meant with the opportunity to remove it sometime in the near future. The students, only ten percent of the students voted. Eighty-six percent said keep the mask, fourteen point four percent said make it optional. When it came to parents, and this surprised me, only thirty-two percent of parents voted. They said maybe thirty-two percent, might not have been that high. Forty-six percent said keep it, forty percent said make it optional, thirteen percent said keep it optional with that metric. So the School Board voted to keep the masks until the end of this month, I think it was February the twenty-fourth. When it came to masks, I asked, you know, because the school is passing out masks, do we have enough masks in, in, in the back? Do we have enough masks? And the answer is, yes, we have plenty of masks for the adults. We do not have masks for the children. So that's concerning. They're doing everything they can to get those masks. The governor actually did a press release on January the twenty-second. I got a copy of that because my question to them and to our county attorney was if the governor very clearly says that the masks are now optional, what gives the School Board the right to do something different? And the governor's press release of January twenty-second said that as this moves through the court system, that parents and students should listen to their School Board and their principal. So it appears that they, while this will go to court, they were well within their right to, to make the decision that they made. Dr. Arnold offered his resignation, I'm sorry, not resignation, offered his retirement letter to the School Board, which who accepted it. And so he will be leaving Amherst County at the end of the school year. And that is all that I have. Are there any questions?
No questions. Thank you. All right, next we have the Central Virginia Planning District Commission meeting on January twentieth.
I, well, we attended that and I, you have a written report and there are minutes in there unless anybody has any questions.
No questions here. All right, next we have citizen comments. Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close citizen comments and we'll go to matters from members of the board. Mr. Wade?
Not at this time.
Ms. Tucker?
I do have something. I don't know how many board members have received calls and emails like I have about the Humane Society and more specifically the animal shelter. There's been a lot of questions asked about how the operations of the animal shelter. There were rumors of notices of violation. Apparently, some of, that, that is true, that there have been some notices of violation. And exactly how the Sheriff's Department plays into that. As background, for those of you all who may, may not know, the sheriffs, the, the animal shelter was a function of the county up until Mr. Ayers can give the exact date. It was, lack of any other word, it was just always a lot of drama there. And it was not being run, way back when, not being run well. And so the Sheriff's Department under Mr., under Sheriff Ayers decided to take it over. They did a good job, got it straight, it ran great. And it's run great until fairly recently. And as, like I said, I've not been down there, I've not talked to these people. What I'm hearing is from constituents, and I have talked to Mr. Rogers. So there have been a number of citizens who have asked me and people associated with the Humane Society and the shelter, why would the county not take it over again? I, I don't have an answer to that. Anyway, but board, I just wanted to make sure that you all knew what I knew. Anyway, but board, I just wanted to make sure that you all knew what I knew in just, in a transparent manner. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Ayers?
What Ms. Tucker has said is, is true. I've gotten several complaints, and folks have called and asked me questions about the shelter and its operations and several things about it. Of course, you know, my, I'm way away from it now, but it was back, and I think it possibly was under one of the former county administrators, possibly Mr. Shaner. It's back a long time ago, when the sheriff's office took the operations, day-to-day operations of the shelter, kind of under its wing. And we managed it, and managed the folks there, and, you know, had inmates there every day cleaning and taking care of it. And established a good working relationship with the Board of Directors for the Humane Society. I don't know what's happened now. I have no idea, but obviously there are some problems. You know, so there again, as Ms. Tucker said, where does this stand? Obviously, it is a core function of the county and not the sheriff's office. It is a responsibility of the county government to maintain that shelter, not the sheriff's office. So, you know, I reckon it's up for discussion and, you know, what do we do if we do anything, so.
All right, well, I guess, let's just get through this and then we'll come back to that. Mr. Martin, do you have anything?
Absolutely. I've, I've had several calls about the same item, so it seems to be a hot topic. I'd take it a step further. I'd like to see pros and cons of what it would look like if the county took it back over and have that for a discussion at a future board meeting.
All right, that's what I was, I was getting ready to ask, is what, what information would we like to see? Or what do we need as far as, I guess, cost to run the facility?
I think cost, how they partner with the Humane, the Humane Society, how all of that works. I want to make sure that the animals are getting the best treatment that they could. I know at one time, I believe Lynchburg had moved to a no-kill shelter. I thought we were following suit in that. I'm not even, I'm not even sure if we're still doing that or not. So I'd like a presentation on how the Humane Society and animal shelter are working together, kind of what their goals are, what's it costs us to operate it, and how we might want to move forward. Does it make sense to you guys?
It does, and Mr. Martin, I don't think we will see any additional cost. We shouldn't because technically we're funding the positions that are utilized to facilitate it now. You know, even up to the law enforcement positions as far as the animal control officers. I think they are county-funded positions as well, so we should not, you know, we may have to incur some cost and things that need to be done there initially. But far as reoccurring cost, I, I can't see how we would, you know, see a significant increase in those at all.
All right, do you need a motion, or we definitely have a consensus here?
Yeah, definitely.
No, sir. I will take that for action and do the research and come back with a report and, on, and the recommendation.
All right.
And I'd like to step further. If, you know, the board decides, Dean, I'd like for you to look to see under whose realm of management that, that would come under.
Yes, sir.
All right. I have no matters from the board. Next, we have a closed session, unless there's any further discussion.
I have none.
All right, I'll make a motion. We go into closed session pursuant to section 2-2-3711, A3 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended for the purpose of discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically relating to property located by Amherst County High School located in District 2. All in favor and go into closed session, please say aye. Any opposed? So we need a motion to come out of closed session?
I move that the Amherst County Board of Supervisors, oh, nope, not yet.
So moved? We have a motion on the floor, Mr. Ayers. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right.
We taking out a session?
Now, yeah, now we need a motion, Mr. Rogers.
To certify, right?
Certified, yes.
Just making sure I'm on the same page. I move that the Amherst County Board of Supervisors certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully, exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session.
Mr. Pugh?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Ayers?
Aye.
Ms. Tucker?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
All right, now we need an adjournment.
So move, Mr. Chair?
Madam, come on now.
All right, now.